Present, but we can't put municipal, any additional municipal. Any other questions? Harry None, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, Lou, you're on.
Okay, the first item I have is Ordinance 5, 2021 for an introduction. And there's been some discussion about when employees of the police department are covered by the pension. Technically, the current ordinance provides once they're sworn officers, but usually they don't come as sworn officer formally. They do it for six months of duty in training academy. So the FOP has asked that they be given credit for that period of time. And in order to do that, we had to modify the definition of covered employee in the pension system. And in so doing, they would get credit from the time they're hired up until the time they retire. But they contribute also to the pension system during that period of time because they're not getting anything. You know, for nothing, they're actually contributing percentage of the pay, so I think. So this covered employee, it's now, I'll read how it's amended. Covered employee means any employee who's hired by the town with the intent to serve as a sworn police officer. But your uncovered employee includes an employee during the period that began till his or her date of hiring ends at the date he or she becomes a sworn police officer. In other words, from the time they're hired up to the time they retire, they get credit in the pension system. I would recommend that board accept this introduction. It's actually, it's been reviewed and discussed by Paul Maddes, attorney, with white for Dale's press. And I'll shoot from the hip and the pension is up. I actually go to counsel on it. Pardon me, John, their pension is closed, so I go to them. So I would accept, I would ask the board to accept the introduction.
We have a motion to accept for introduction purposes, Ordinance 5-2021, amending the police pension plan.
For introduction purposes only, and I, it's approved.
No second. We've got a motion, a second, heated session on this introduction. Harry None, all in favor?
The next item I have is a proposal by KCI to evaluate the Red Hill reservoirs. As the board knows, the reservoirs were constructed around 1935. There's two 900,000 gallon in-ground concrete reservoirs up there that are lined with pipe on liner. And say the least, it's pretty old. And under the arc of funding, I believe they are eligible for reconstruction or restoration. And that's what we're going to pursue, but in pursuant to that, we need to have them properly evaluated. So we've asked KCI to do a proposal in order to perform that evaluation. And their proposal's for $13,900 and not to exceed $10,000 for time and materials basis. So I think that's very reasonable and will be used for both for this and for ultimately for behalf of those same just possibly. So we ask the board to accept the proposal by KCI to evaluate the Red Hill reservoirs.
We have a motion to approve the KCI proposal for the Red Hill reservoir rehabilitation project 2021-003. So who?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and discussion on this proposal. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
The last I have is an agreement with Southfield Development, Apple Development LLC. They were in here earlier, represented by personally, DPA, I guess, about using McKennie Park specifically to hatchery for wetlands delineation. And this is, and I think the board basically agreed with that concept. Consequently, I put together an agreement with them in order to use that part for wetlands mitigation. Activities probably run for several years as they develop their project, Southfield project. Allows them to use this as an off-site need of meeting wetlands requirements. And it's already been reviewed by Ray Jackson and his group, and they signed it. So I would ask the board to agree in that way, we think, go ahead and start their planning for the use of McKennie Park Hatchery for the wetlands mitigation efforts.
We have a motion to approve the agreement with Southfield, Elton, County LLC, with the McKennie Park Hatchery Wetlands Mitigation Project.
Yeah, I get so moved.
A motion in a second. Any discussion on this project? Harry None, all in favor? Motion carries.
The only other thing I have is the MOU 213, he's high, John's working on that. I'm going to comment on it. I can give you a brief update on that, but here, I have created each block for part of its own separate memory and understanding. I have completed the draft of that and I have each of them here. And basically what it is, two-page memory memorandum of understanding with the attached documents being the documents that were used to take the assignment from a prior and enable the completed sign and train the property. The greenstone, let's put it that way, have been conveyed to this town. So we've got property, the next step is to get this memorandum of understanding completed between the town and the county. When that is done, we'll then report to 2D's. And then we will do a, what's the name of the subdivision, add-on subdivision? Do the add-on subdivision of the two counties, or the two properties as one. And then, and then basically we're done with that point, those two will remember the town selects. Where we are is a memorandum, the understanding is complete, all the assignment documents are complete. I need to make sure that the numbers in both match. And that's where I've been going back and forth with the county and we're just having some phone tech. I think we'll get that all sorted out this week. I don't mean to invite anything wrong. It's just I want all the boxes checked and all the pies done and things crossed. So I think we'll get that done this week and then hopefully we'll be able to present it to you guys at the next meeting. Perfectly completed.
Very good. Thank you, John. Anything else, Lou?
I know, but I would comment that none of the activities that we're having here are done in back room, smoking filled back room.
Yeah, thanks.
Done at open events, if we normally conduct our business.
Yeah, I, I mentioned this earlier. I've always said to, when I was coaching football in Little League and we have parent meetings and prior to the start of the season, of the coaching season, I used to tell the parents, I said, listen, if you're upset with the way that I'm coaching, or if you're upset that your child's not playing or participating, please wait 24 hours before you come see me. I said, now, if you're real upset with me, give it 48 hours. And when I saw the video that you're talking about, Lou, it strongly bothered me. And I, I'm not sure what the direction the executive was going with that. But I can promise you something in front of my board, our board, right here. I promise you, I will never call anyone out like that, ever, never. Would never do that. And it's just not my style. I don't think it's any of our style to do that. And I, I just think that maybe it's some learning on her side, or she was playing to her base. But it affected a lot of people. It affected our integrity. And in fact, it affects our planning commission's integrity and all the staff in the town of Elton that put together time, effort, and energy to make these things go. And their, their issue was that they truly didn't understand the in-exaction process of how it works. And this is how it was created. But I never went to the executive and had any conversations with her. I'm okay with that because as I said in my, I'm taking some time. You can.
When you're done?
Yep, I'm done with that comment.
I will at least mention to the board that I did have a chance to speak with her briefly.
After that?
Yeah. And by no means did, did I get overall apology or anything, or any hearing of her plans to apologize publicly or retract anything. But she did tell me that in doing what, in saying what she said, was it was directed towards her board. And that when it went outside of that and affected this, this board in this town, she truly hadn't thought it through. And for that, she apologized. And I just loved it that.
She apologized to you in, in yours conversation?
In my conversation. And I said, I said, I would like to, you know, relay that to my board. She said, please do. Not, I don't think that, you know, makes up for her not donating herself.
That's what I would say is a question.
But I still, I said I would do it.
Personally, I'd like to see a follow-up video.
No, don't blame me. To clarify.
You know, we work very hard, we're very honest people. I see it from the inside now. And none of y'all, none of us deserve it.
I think Commissioner Mefley and his whole group too, should receive an apology because they are honorable people. Also, they faithfully represent the people of Cecil County. So I think that was pretty salient, salient to them, I would imagine.
Yeah, one pastor said, once upon a time in church, say something, go up, you can't reach back and pull it back in. So sometimes it kind of comes back to you another way. Said with Jamal, actually word, emails, or something like that. But it is what it is at this point.
It is. I had a question here in regards to, I know that we're going to have a closed meeting to talk about a couple of things. One, one being the acquisition of real estate was, was what we're going to discuss. And, but I want to get clarification on, I know we, we have a second special workshop meeting with Artesian at 2:30. Should I go ahead and finish this agenda here first? And close the meeting and not reconvene, or how are we going to do that?
That's the way I set it up. That's the most efficient way to do it. That way we're not hanging the super meeting up. So I have two separate ID numbers for the workshop.
Perfect. So we'll, we'll finish out this meeting and then we'll close it, have a closed session. We won't reconvene. And then we're going to reconvene and open up a new meeting at 2:30 to talk about some, some things that we have with Artesian.
I agree with that. Is that okay? I might say you can't be the hangar ones on, on the meeting right there, maybe.
Yeah, that'd be good. So there's a few things that I wanted to bring up, but I still wanted to mention, we do have some appointments that we could make on the Board of Appeals and the Historic Committee. Please give me some names. There's been a couple of names coming to us. I'm not ready to make any recommendations. But if you have anyone in mind, please have them come down, fill out the application or grab one. It's a real short and brief application and at least we'll have some information on the individual. But we do have some openings. Have some openings. I wanted to mention the, the ARPA in general, the American Rescue Money. We've, we've received their money. We know that we can use this money for infrastructure needs of the, of the town. We know that we can use it for broadband activities. And I, I just think that we all need to get some clarification. And Lou, maybe you can help us and Michelle can help us. But when I'm reading it, it does say that we can use some of that funding for losses that the town has had in, in revenue sources. For example, if I'm looking at our water and sewer numbers right now, they don't look like they're coming in as strong as they were in the past. Now, maybe it was just a bad couple of quarters there. But it seems like we should be able to refund ourselves for the loss in revenue of water and sewer. If we, if we gave back two years ago, and then maybe we even project two years in the future is what you can use some of that money for. Secondly, programs like our parks and rec program that we didn't receive the, the amount of dollars that we projected by budget. If we didn't meet those numbers, then I also know that we can subsidize ourselves with that ARPA money for losses in that, in that program. A couple of things I don't know if we really looked at was whether or not, like in the building inspection office, and it, we may be, we may have been the opposite way to where we're in because of COVID. We might have had more action than we had in the past. But if we projected that we were going to do X amount of dollars and we're down here, then I think we can also use some of those dollars to make up that difference in our budget from the previous year. I may be incorrect with that, but please take a look at that for us and give us some type of clarification. Secondly, if I read it correctly, it stated about, we could give money to 501(c)(3) organizations that have shown to us that they've had a loss during the COVID. And I'd like for us as a board to give it some strong thought of how much of this ARPA money that we want to position ourselves for. So currently we're at, let's say, $7.6 million that we have received. And if we use it, we're going to get another $7.6 million, I think, next year. And the monies have to be used by 2024. My, my comment would be, I think that if we took, yeah, I'm sorry, cut it. The monies, the monies that we have received were total by 2024. Total. You have to use the total amount or have it.
The $7 that we've received, when do we have to use that by?
2024. The total amount is in 2024, if I'm not.
Maybe I can. As another cut-off date for that in order to get the second half of.
That's a good question, man. Maybe there.
It has to be dedicated.
So the first, the first section has to be dedicated before we get the second half? The total amount has to be dedicated. So what I, I'd like to ask the board is to give it some serious thought. And I might have an answer in, in, you know, let's say, within the next two weeks. Maybe we can all get together, maybe we do meet next Wednesday and talk about what percentage of that is. And I don't think we need a lot. I think that we need to, but I, I think if we put a half a million dollars or $750,000 and put those aside for our 501(c)(3) organizations, that's a pretty good amount of money that we could distribute to organizations that would have to apply for and show us what their need was. We have received a couple already at this point. I have personally received one from the Elton VFW. Their slot machine, slot machine sales have been down the last two years. And I think we all know our service organization like the VFW gives a lot back to our community. They've given a lot to the town of Elton over the years with police vests. They've given a lot to the Elton Alliance. The American Legion has also requested, we consider them also. We've also had, I have got an email from the Elton Little League requesting some assistance. Several churches, as well as junior football, the YMCA has approached us. And also, kind of last but not least, their Singerly Fire Company. There is a, some dollars out there that I think that we can use to help our community when they are in a time of need more than ever. So I'm asking the board, and I, and I'm asking staff, that make sure you give us some clarification that we can or cannot do that. But I think that they show the loss, and, and this loss can be based on their last two years losses plus what they see in the next two years losses, if I read that correctly. So look, we're going to get a total of over $15 million. And I know we need a lot of infrastructure help here in the town for our residents in general. But there's.
I would, from our small town businesses, does that include them?
The businesses, very fortunately, have been able to get the PPP money. They've been able to get grants. But I wouldn't rule that out, but ours specifically is to the nonprofits.
Yeah, I understand. I just, I was just wondering if they could be included, or if they're included. That's based on my question.
I think if we could get that answer to us, and maybe we can come up with a list.
And now the things, some of the things that we as a town have invested in for screening and the COVID testing. All of that stuff should be included in there too, because we have to pay out extra dollars.
You're 100% right. The, the Lexan that we put up into the other facilities can absolutely be paid us reimbursed. Any, I think we, during the COVID, well, we're still in the COVID, I call it the COVID, I have crazy sense. But during this whole process, I think we were forward-thinking that we gave staff, we alternated weeks with staff internally in here and also with our public works department. We never gave additional dollars for them to be here, which you could give additional dollars. But I think we did a pretty good job of giving people one week of them and one week.
Did they have lost revenue?
No, they didn't. They were paid.
Okay.
That's a good, great question. If they lost revenue, then we need to figure out how they can address that. They just coded their COVID and then were paid. So I, I might, is the board okay with that? I said, let's, let's do it next Wednesday. And so we're going to go ahead and do it next Wednesday. Now, I may not be here, which is probably a good thing. And.
You want us to do it next Wednesday?
Yeah, I think so.
Can we have a list of all these?
I will. I'll give you a list of every, every letter that I've received.
That has requested help.
Or would you rather do it, we, that would be the only thing on the agenda.
For what, the workshop?
For the workshop. We don't need to do a workshop next Wednesday. Let's not do the workshop next Wednesday and we'll do it.
The 20th?
The 20th, the Greg, I mean.
Give them time to get everything together. I, I would like to have an estimate or guess on what the reservoirs are going to end up costing, so.
Several million.
Well, that's, like, is it 1 million or 6 million? You know, if it could just be a.
Covered for a million.
Well.
Easy. I don't know yet because they have to be evaluated. It may be into a condition that it could be replaced. If you're talking 1,800,000 gallons of storage you have to replace.
Right.
I couldn't even estimate what that might cost right now if you have to start from scratch, you know, build facilities.
I would say, and I, I know Lou doesn't want to give you a firm number, but I could say, let's say, if we estimated $2 million. If we build a water tower up there, I think so.
That's what I'll.
And then we've got the one project that's happening for the clean manufacturing coming in. We're doing an upgrade in Upper Chesapeake, which is a couple hundred thousand.
250 approximately.
And then we have some other upgrades that Dan talked about and a couple of waste water treatment plant. But saying all those numbers, maybe we spent 6 million?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know either.
It would be good to see them.
Lou, that would be good too, if we could get that list of what we think the estimates are.
Yeah, just roughly, so we know what direction to go in. Is there infrastructure, like how the pipes on Main Street burst? Because they're, what, the old? Are they, were they terrified pipes or no?
No, what happened on Main Street when we just had that recent break, it was the valve. It was the valve and it was a galvanic reaction between the metals. So they, they were using stainless steel bolts, which you have to use. And stainless steel reacted to the, the valve and it was the bolts that rotted. The stainless steel bolts snapped.
So this can happen?
It was been happening about every 20 years. It's been happening in a couple of other spots.
I'm just wondering if there's any major areas that Dan also thinks we need to address.
It'll be here at the 2:30 meeting, we should ask.
Okay, thank you.
The, when you had mentioned the UV project at the treatment plant, the cost of the two UV units is 192,000. That's just for units. That's not for additional piping or instrumentation or installation costs, which I'm waiting on from them, from Infomart. They did give me 192 grand of cost for just the two UV units to go in there. Got to put them in now. That's what my cost for the 80,000 or something like that.
Yeah, I'd rather you even overestimate, so, you know. See.
Yeah, I think so too. So that's what the ARPA will address at in two weeks. We'll have a little bit more information. But I also wanted to touch base on a little small, I think everybody, in fact, I know each of us have had a presentation done with us from the Singerly Fire Company. And it is a truly eye-opening, the presentation, when you start looking back how our partnership with Singerly has been extremely strong. And then somewhere along in the, in the mid 70s, not that the relationship went in any crazy way or not, but the communication of our partnership kind of changed at that time. It used to be, looking back at the old minutes and during the presentation, the town board, the mayor commissioners actually had to make, had to stamp that the, that was the right chief of the fire company. It was one of those things that was voted on by this board. They made their vote and then it would bring to us to confirm that vote. But somewhere in the 70s, and it was probably under Jim Kraus's leadership, he said, you know, we're just rubber stamping this. Why do you guys even have to come there? And I think at the time, it made, it made sense, but what it did is, you know, just didn't have the communication that we have today. And we're trying to build that communication back with the fire company. In our charter, a couple of things, it says, states in our charter is very clear that, that we need to provide our public with safety. And, and this is one thing that providing ambulance services and fire services is part of our duty. And I think that the fathers before us recognize that too. In our charter, we have a charter, in our charter, it states that the town of Elton gives Singerly Fire Company, based on total assessments of the town. gives Singerly Fire Company based on total assessments of the town, a percentage of dollars. And I think uh this previous year, this year, current year, we just uh presented a check to Singerly Fire Company for, I think it was close to a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which meant that our assessable base in the town was like one, one billion fifty-five thou, or fifty-five million dollars or whatever the number was. Now we also know as the town grows and our assessable base grows, that money's going to uh increase for Singerly Fire Company. The challenge that we have with this is that the dollars needed for Singerly to provide ambulance services and fire services and the changes in OSHA uh uh rules, to give you one example, back in the old days, a firefighter, uh, you kind of shared the fire suit. Um, so you'd have your fire suits on the shelf and whoever was the first one to run down when the bell rang, he'd put that fire suit and you'd go fight the fire. Well, today, uh, then they made a change a few years ago that each firefighter had to have one suit. One fire suit. You had to have your own. So you had your locker, you had one suit, you had to wear that suit. Well, just the new recent standard is a firefighter has to have two suits. And the reason behind that is, is that uh, uh, after nine eleven, I guess all the contaminants from ash and, and fire and whatever it may be, you have to get that other suit cleaned and you always have to have uh the backup suit there. Well, these suits, it was, it was scary how much uh, it was, I think it was ten thousand dollars per outfit for, per person, for volunteer or for professional. So you think about that, if you have a, a fire company that uh is in need of ten more people or twenty more people that now lay a cash at not ten thousand dollars, but twenty thousand dollars per person, it's a large amount of dollars. And uh, it's overwhelming. I think the Singerly's budget now is, well, just under four million dollars to operate uh what they do for the, for our community. So what I'm asking uh the board to take a look at, give it some real consideration is we haven't worked the numbers out yet, but there's a couple of methods uh that I think that we need to address. One method would be, do we increase that percentage of the town taxes to uh go to the fire company? Uh, increase that number by the charter? Or do we create a whole new funding source? And one thought that I've had before is on our water bills, currently on our water bill, we have a line item that says trash pickup. We have a line item that says save the bag and then we have the water and sewer number. What if there was a line item that said Singerly Fire Company? And that's, and if, and if that line item could actually, I believe, be a tax deductible uh line item for the person that's paying that water bill? The thought would be, do you make it a flat dollar amount? Or do you make it based on the usage of water that the person is using? Which would be fair, so if it was a percentage of a penny to our residents, but then our corporations might be who's using more water volume, they would have to pay more. Now, I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent, but it's something that I'm asking the board to think about, digest it a little bit and thinking, and maybe we don't even want to go this direction. But it was addressed to uh, addressed to me and addressed to us in that conversation. And it really hit home with me. I mean, I was never uh, uh, a person that uh understood the interworkings of the fire company. Cause I was never a member. Uh, but after being well educated uh to this, I feel, I feel it's a need that we're supposed to provide or help provide and they do a darn good job providing a lot of dollars. But give us a thought on which direction we can go. Maybe, maybe we won't go any direction, but I thought that'd be a good.
I always had it in my mind that somehow or another we're going to find a way to reduce the cost for water citizens and towns up, they shouldn't need it now. But I'm just saying that eventually when, if all this uh extra housing comes and development comes, this tax base changes, I would still like to see this in the future, a decrease for the uh, uh, for residents in the town health. That's just my, 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 my hope and thoughts.
Get to keep in mind that as they expand the maintenance and upkeep of those systems and the operating contract where the wells and the pump stations and all that increase. So it's not like, okay, you got something free. It, it, actually the cost will increase until we go into a deficit, so you have to be careful about.
Well, again, that's just a, a wish of mine, because I was going to say that if that were to come true, then I would like to take that difference and put it into a fund for our, for our company and then offset it that way. But that was just a thought now.
Listen, that's a great thought and listen, we were able, because in your leadership to help us with it, we were able to lower our water bills in Elton fifteen percent and our sewer bills by fifteen percent over the last uh eight years. But the, the bad side of it, the water bill looks like it's more because we had more trash paid back into it. So it, so it really, when you get that bill, it looks like we didn't do anything, but the fact is we did lower fifteen percent.
But I understand what Sam Lou said, I wouldn't say that, I didn't hear what you said, but uh, I'm just saying, all the time I've been on board, it's always been a thought of mine, so.
Well, thank you, Rob.
Have you, have you gone anywhere in the direction of figuring out a dollar amount that would be taxed on?
Uh, uh, Rob, actually I did, I did look at it and that was the Steve Repo. He sent me over uh some information that we had, I think it was close to six thousand houses. And if you took six thousand houses and you put uh a hundred dollars per year for Singerly Fire Company on their water bill, that would be once a quarter, twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars a quarter, that would, that would, that would bring in additional six hundred and about six hundred thousand more dollars to the Singerly Fire Company. Now that's, that would be a tax deductible number for them. Uh, but do you do it that way or do you do it to where it's based on the amount of water you use? So for example, uh, if you, if you did it where, and, and I haven't did the math on this, but if it was a one penny per hundred gallons uh that you pay and it might only be six dollars for you.
Cause Earl showers.
Yeah, and Earl, Earl showers like four times a day, so his would buy. So his, his water bill, his, his contribution to Singerly could be seventeen dollars. And then you, and then you have, uh, I'll use a, a business like uh the Cecil County Detention Center that uses the third most amount of water in Cecil, in, in the town of Elton. They be, they may be, the Cecil County uh Detention Center could be giving two hundred thousand dollars to the, to the fire company.
The only thing I, I would comment on here is that if you add this to the water and sewer bill, there are enterprise funds and there's anyway fire companies supported by the general fund. So you'd have an issue of taxing or actually putting the burden of expense on uh people that are engaged in water and sewer services within the enterprise fund, which earns its way, so to speak. And the fire company actually gets their money from the general fund. That's why it's based on the tax assessment rather than the usage of water.
But how do we pay the trash that way? We pay the trash company that way.
The trash company has a sad on fear of figure for the general fund.
So what Lou's saying.
Not based on water or sewer usage.
Yeah, if we put it in an ad lib fund, we could do it, but if it's by the gallon, then it might be a general.
I put it on there, that's just a means of billing the people, but it's actually, it's not based on use of water or sewer.
Yeah, I, I also missed Steve giving me a couple of numbers real quick, but I think we, we need to get them firmed up.
Yeah.
Um, or if we go in this direction, this direction, this direction, so we know what we're looking at.
I, I think it's a great conversation. It's not an easy conversation. No one wants to do this.
No, it seems like we're, we're heading in a good direction.
I think so too.
A way to help out the fire company.
Well, you know, we're not just helping them out, see it this way, you know? In life, we have three, three avenues where people need help. They need the police and we fund that a hundred percent. They need ambulance services and first, you know, emergency care. And they need fire protection. Two of the three are provided by volunteer public. So I would think that our responsibility does come into play here when you look at it.
What uh, for comment, I believe and Sam could uh comment on this. The uh fire company is faced with a dilemma of getting volunteers because fire service, rescue, all those types of things requires intensive training and not that many people that want to dedicate that much time to training. It's not like the old days, we go out and field sometimes, they actually go through fire training. So in the absence of more volunteers or the, the problem of getting volunteers, it'll turn into paid people, paid firemen or rest rescue and EMTs, all that. That is an increased cost to the fire company and I believe that there are uh, these, they showed where that's not sustainable at the current revenue they're receiving from the town or anyone else or volunteer efforts or fundraising. It's not going to cut it.
The times have changed.
Spend the, just like the mayor mentioned, not only the turnout gear, it's all the gear that goes with it. I mean, it's got packs, these that oxygen and everything, the tanks, compressed air tanks and all that. There's a lot of stuff that goes with a fireman when he gets on that truck and that truck costs a million bucks or more. So I mean, you know, I mean, we're talking serious stuff here in the future.
It is crazy, but I think we're on the right page.
I do too.
All right, well, I have nothing else to add. Earl, you have anything to add to the?
Uh, no, I just want to say I apologize for missing the uh police event and also the fire uh banquet. I was out of town, but I just want to say it wasn't overlooked, it's just I was on town, so just want to apologize for that.
You don't need to apologize?
Yes, I do. I just, I was, I was willing to be there, I wanted to be there, so.
Robert? The uh merchants downtown are very happy and grateful for the dumpsters that have been dropped off. We're on our third one down there now and it's being built. There was a lot of damage in this last, but um, so they're all very appreciative for that. Um, I met with Ed um, uh, last, last year, I wonder, which is Ed Down, Ed Down. I met with Ed yesterday and he showed me what he's been working on for our steps downtown. Very nice, I'll, I'll leave it at that and let you guys be surprised. Um, the other thing, one thing I wanted to mention was we had a very well attended office, um, very little trouble as usual and um, everybody really enjoyed themselves and got a guy. Gene?
Very successful. Uh, I have one question for Sam before I get out of here. Um, just from my own curiosity, what, what does it cost you for grass cutting and summer removal?
Um, I think combined grass cutting and summer removal, it depends on the year. Uh, is it accessible, fifty thousand dollars?
Per year, totally. Okay, thank you.
Charles?
I think uh, Lois, not just you, but to let the board know, I think we need to relook at the inside of the uh neighborhoods out there. I, not think, there needs to be matting along some of the walls, you need to go in there and see. Also, as you walk around that gym, and it is a full-size gym, you will see solid beams coming out towards the floor. They need to be matted because oftentimes when you're in a gym, whether you're playing basketball or any other activity, sometimes you're off of that floor and sometimes kids won't know where they are in space. If you go to any gym right now, you will find that you don't have beams and anything like that that is unsafe around you at all. And normally if a kid gets hurt, I've done this a long time ago and I lived in a gym and coached in a gym, first thing the judges see that beam right there or oh yeah, rather than there was, oh, there's a lawsuit. I don't think we want to put our thoughts in that direction. So I'm asking if you'll go around and see it like that.
We can get padding around those beams.
But it's needed.
It is needed.
Because I mean, you go after an air ball or anything else, a kid, you don't know that that's air. But you know the walls there, you know, where the Texas, I'll put my hands up, that way there. Another thing that I saw, it's no big deal with me, it might be a big deal in the future at that, uh, whoever built the gym, built a water fountain in there. Again, if you go to any water fountain, any gym, in this day and age, you will not see one in the gym. Because all they do, they overflow and you got a wooden floor, the floor eventually got to come back up. I don't know how it would be on the mats over there, but if you go in there now, you'll see that there's paper and cardboard, everything under the uh speaker, I'm not, not speaker, but the button because the water was flooded. And you just can't have that going, 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 and going.
It might make sense to take it out.
Yeah, right. I mean, you, you, you don't see that at any gyms anymore. I know it's a, it's, it's, it's a pleasure, it's a plus, but it's, it's, it becomes a problem down the road.
One of the reasons that was there is gym wasn't designed strictly for sports. When we got eight hundred thousand dollars from CDVG, we uh got uh that money based on the possibility of that being used for public, used during an emergency or catastrophic event where people could be in there. Consequently, we had the generator size to operate the ventilation system and air systems and everything else. So we can have people in there, I mean, whether they're cops or whatever, because that was one of the things that we had to decide to get that eight hundred grand. You know, so that's why we were found and stuff were put in there, we can disconnect them, whatever, but uh, even though we're using it for sports, that was one of the things we wanted to resolve.
That's a good point. Maybe we can charge, maybe we can charge it off for sporting events and then if we have, you know, we can, other venues.
That makes it even some, some, yeah. Second, uh, I was speaking with Carolyn Rogers and I, the Sam or Chief Carolyn Rogers, to give her a respectful title, uh, about maybe sometime later having, not a workshop, but then a workshop session, talk to the uh, talk to us about, you know, her job and what happens over there a lot of times. Also, there's police reforms coming up, but my specific thing is there were, there's a lot of shooting in Elton, a lot of these neighborhoods there and uh, there are some still things going on. Sometime my phone is, is, is really loaded with calls, people in the community who know you, who they want to cry out to you, who want to tell you this. And you've got to tell these people, you know, we're the mayor and commissioner, we cannot get involved in all this matter. And uh, you know, those on Facebook, uh, I just think that, and I've learned a lot from her too, that, you know, if somebody has a problem, they need to come in and, and fill out a complaint. You can do it right at the desk. Uh, as she was saying, basically, uh, you can also go online. It just keeps us out of whatever, because people think that we can do a whole lot of things, yes and no, but not when they get in matters like that. And certainly, it, it bothers me sometimes if you get calls, even though people know you, 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 you cannot cope to their needs. They either need a lawyer or they need somebody. And graciously, Chief Allen will, you know, receive people at times, protection will always be in the process either, because the process is you fill out a complaint, a formal complaint. Then if that does not get resolved, then eventually it may get to her. And she's been very good, even talking to some of the people in this community that involved in some of the things that's going on. So I appreciate that from her. Uh, this weekend, there's going to be what's called a faith and blue weekend, police department receives a grant and uh, Chief Allen is going to connect with Wright's Church. Wright's Church in Kansas has made an overture out to the GEMA, which is the um, greater ministerial office of all the churches where the police is going to come and try to have a manner of reaching anciliation with members in the community, again, who don't understand what goes on with policing or meeting policing, you know, in a different platform. It's not like the national level, it's just going to be a time where maybe you can find out some things that you didn't know before. And with that, Wright's Church is going to have an ice cream truck out there and they also going to have uh, one of those trailers on back of a truck that has the video games on it where a mass number of kids can go in there and play on it and that is sticking over to the neighborhood center from twelve o'clock to three. So I don't know what the police department has playing, but again, they. So I don't know what the police department has playing, but again, they're trying to connect to the community, which is a good thing. Because you know how policing is out here today. It doesn't get a break. You talk about them like they are the worst thing in the world, but certainly Oakland, I think, has done a great job with their police. Over the years, even over the bad times, Oakland was still good.
Yeah.
Uh, the next thing, uh, Sunday I saw maybe plenty of people out on the court playing pickleball. And strange thing are, they are from Delaware. So this, they realized that there's a court over here with that there. And that was good. Then T U R O, but maybe play pickleball and I'll be there with you.
I think we could start a team.
You can. And I thought it was one other thing, but I guess it's not. Ooh, that's it. Oh, yes, Lois. Uh, what is the status of the, uh, phase one of the government at the Oakland College School? Was the process or is there one of that? Some of those people have mentioned that.
Bill Stevens is performing the evaluation. And, uh. I, I have to find out from him where he is on that. I know that we got, recently got information. About the, uh, 55 gallons drum that is deep and 2,000 gallon, uh. Uh, where tank that had, I mean, a heating oil tank that had been removed. From a former employee or an employee of, uh, the school system that I guess the other consultant didn't have. So, uh. I don't know if you heard anything from Bill since recently or not.
He's continuing to follow up on it. He, the, the large things, as I predicted would be the case, he's pretty much run the ground. I think there's one remaining small issue that I think he's going to run the ground also. Uh, but that's what he's in the process of doing now. He, he's, I think, pretty much getting ready to complete his, his work on that. So I think it was a good idea to get Bill involved in this and I think it's going to turn out the way I predicted. So.
Okay. One simple last thing, it's not simple. We had received limitations, um, and so we got an opportunity to go to Fair Hill on that survey. And ones from the county to go there on Sunday. So same thing, different people, different time.
Very good. Uh, one additional thing I wanted to mention that to the board. I sent out an email to everybody and, uh, we talked about, uh. Could we move forward and, and taking a look at a, uh, a, a structure in the, uh. The payroll for the town of Elton. I think we've, uh. Uh, I don't know the last time we did the, the structure of the, uh, the classifications plus the steps. But I think it might be in need of an upgrade, especially with the minimum wage dollars going up and going to be going up into the future. And we've had, uh, I've had, um, a, a few department heads come to me and ask for additional dollars for employees. And I think that if we, it, it, even though I think it's probably needed. Uh, to give employees additional dollars right now at this point, but I think if we, if we do it without having the system in place. Then why do we have the system? Uh, I think, uh, there's a reason why you have that step three process. So that everyone doesn't bunch up, especially if you have a new employee, they earning more than the older employee. So I think that there has to be some type of step, reevaluated step process. And, uh, I think that hopefully that when we do our hires, and I'm sure we do. Everyone is aware of where they're at on the step. Three, and they know where in X amount of years, they know that they're going to be at. Is that the way it works?
Yes, that's the way it works. Yeah. Always had that problem. You work so long and you make extra a lot of dollars than somebody new and they already here. So this person here to pay it because they need to be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit of a challenge and I think that we need to reevaluate that. I don't know who we get to do. Maybe we can do it internal.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's Renee. Sorry, I was on another call and so I needed to unmute. Um, when we hire anybody, we look at their background first. Um, and we bring them in according to what their education and their background is. Um, and we have been trying at least at, in, you know, in some of the positions. Um, especially DPW, we've been trying, Dan's been working with Kathy to slowly get them raised up. But we never ever bring a new hire in. Higher than somebody that's already existing here. Because that causes a great inequity, um, in the pay scale. Um, as far as, um, the town side, um, the police do have grade step. The town side does not. We got, they got rid of the step program a long time ago. So it's only a grade from minimum to maximum. And right now we do have some people that are over maximum in their, in their current grade. So yes, I, I believe I, I commented to you, um, a few weeks ago that we do need to reassess that scale. Because within the next two years, the minimum wage is going to be at 1325, I believe. By January 1 of 2023. So we need to make sure that our scale is staying. Above that. Um, the minimum wage.
Perfect. We'll have, uh, uh, I think we'll have Lou get in touch with you and we'll figure out how we can get this moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, but by the same token, who has the scale for the total talent of Elton, including the police? Where does that come from now?
The police has, uh, scale.
I'm asking her, Lois. Thank you. Then you can come behind her if she can't ask.
Tell me to send her an FOB contract that I.
Well, I, I guess the gist of my question or answer, or whatever you want to term it. That one time, even though we weren't concerned about who was getting what, it was always given to us. So we too, as mayor and commissioner. As everybody else falls under the umbrella, at least knows what's going on, but it even comes a personal who's getting what. Because long ago, that used to be a big problem. It come to us and ask, you know, this person is getting this and this person is getting that. And, you know, it would come to us, there wasn't much we could do other than give suggestions. Long ago, Jim Kraus, when he was mayor, he had the University of Maryland always did this for us. Pre-gradus, that went away and that's how we ended up getting what we had, which wasn't good. So like I said, I don't know what we have, but. Good, like somebody like, uh, Mr. Maschio, Commissioner Maschio would see how it works.
Shitting all around it.
Well, I, um, Commissioner.
Lois wants to answer, then you can answer. That's fine.
Um, the, the, the police are separate, but all of our, um, civilian workers in the police department. And throughout the rest of the town, we have the one, um. Set of papers with the different grades from grade one all the way up through, I believe it's 10 or 11. And it's according to where that person starts. Like I said, what they bring to, what they're bringing to us. Experience, education, and what that job, um, entails. And what Kathy does, she goes out and looks around the state of Delaware, um, the state of Maryland. For similar jobs. So. For instance, if it's a finance job, she would go out and look at all the jobs around the state, um, in government. And see what they're paying. So we're paying comparable prices on pay to. To those people coming on board. Um, now we did, um, back in 2015 or 2016. We stopped every time the mayor would give an increase on July 1st. It was also raising the, the minimum wage of the scale. It was being added into that and we had to stop that because what we had were, were people that started the year before. Two years later, somebody would start and they'd be making the same as somebody that was, had been here for two years. There were, it wasn't setting our older employees or our employees that were already on board. Separate from new hires if they were starting at the bottom of the scale. So we had that put on hold. Um, and we probably left it on hold too long, but now we're going to have to do a catch up. But that, that, um, scale for the employees have, it has needed to be reevaluated for the last couple of years. And, um, it, it just hasn't been. And, you know, whether it was HR that dropped the ball, we just knew the money wasn't in the budget. But it, it does need to be addressed now because, um. Like I said, the, um, minimum wage, um, January 1st has gone up to 1250, I believe it is.
Well, fantastic. We'll get it rolling.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is the time of the meeting we haven't had before for anyone for the good of Elton. Now we've got one person in the room. Sam Goldwood, do you have anything to say for the good of the town of Elton?
Uh, just wanted to relate to you that, uh, if we did send a letter to the town, uh, yesterday. Commissioner Blamell, um, and carried it from our behalf. And, uh, so you should have a copy.
We do.
And I think it addresses some of the conversation that we had and Lou is very right. That, uh, the cost and as well with the mayor, uh, the costs are, have been going exponential. Uh, for things that are required to supply public with the proper level of service. And, uh, we don't see that going, certainly it's not going to be going down. And, uh, and it's to the point of where the fire department is, is getting, uh, into the. Emergency modes financially in that, for example, the first quarter of this year. The fire department was a negative $175,000. So it, it, we are reaching critical mass. And so it's, it's great. Uh, that the town is looking at this right now, but I, I just would like to stress that. Um, time is of the essence because we can't, uh, well, we shouldn't, uh, reduce our level of service. However, we will get to a point where we can provide service.
Thank you, Sam. And 315 Hermidge Drive. Set your address.
325.
325, 325 Hermidge Drive. All right. Uh, anyone on the Zoom meeting have anything to say for the good of the town of Elton? All right. Very good. Uh, I need a motion to hold a closed meeting. Uh, to discuss acquisition of real property. We have a motion. Charles Gibbons. Second, second, my Commissioner Maschiano. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Uh, we're going to have our closed meeting and we will not reconvene. But we will be opening up another workshop at about 2:30 today. Anyone wants to watch in? Thank you so much. Meeting's adjourned.